Yeah, I'm in a meeting right now. I can't talk. Oh, hi Jeff. Yeah, County Council's just starting. I'll call you. Bye for now.
We're live.
Thank you. I'll call the County Council Budget Meeting of February 7th, 2024 to order. And can I get approval of the agenda, please?
Still moved?
Move by Doug.
Okay, Doug and Henry? All in favor?
Yes.
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 I'll need at least one more yes. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm having a little technical difficulty in case anyone's watching this live. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? None are declared. So the first item on the agenda under Matters for Consideration is the John M. Parrott Center's Staffing Enhancements. And is Angela going to address this or who's going to speak to this? Or Mark?
Through you, Mr. Warden. It's Angela. I will take this.
Okay, thanks Angela. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So as you can see, this report is identifying the measures that we're putting, we're proposing to get us towards the four hours of care. This enhancement towards the nursing department impacts the PSWs, the RPNs, and the RNs. Those are the only three groups that could be considered when we are working towards the four hours of care. So what I have outlined for you gets us to the 3.6 hours of care, which as you can see in the report is the requirement that's necessary by March 31st of 2024. And then by March 31st of 2025, we will need to be at the four hours of care. So I have laid out for you the additional hours that we are allocating towards the PSWs, which is a total of 52.5 hours on a daily basis. This is a combination of duties that we are going to roll out with this, with this enhancement where they will do partial hours will be actually on the floor doing direct care. And then the, another portion of the hours is going to be in supporting and mentoring our PSWs. We're seeing that some of the newer grads are perhaps struggling a little bit with integrating into the workforce because they've done some online learning and more virtual education. So we're hoping that this will help. And with the addition of the hours, we of course want to see an enhancement in quality of care and services that are being provided to the residents. So you'll see those enhancements outlined in the chart. And then an additional 7.5 hours daily of the art for an RPN. Now, this will help with supporting the necessary enhancements as far as wound audits and wound documentation, physician orders and that sort of thing that are connected to the RPN role. Currently, we have six RPNs in the building on a given day and they're all providing, they're responsible for an RHA, plus they're providing medications and treatments to the residents. So this will be an extra one that will be available in the building to support our doctors' rounds days and additional practices that are required. In addition to that 7.5 hour with an RPN, it would be, we would, we are proposing another RPN one day per week. And that will be to support our RYE backup. So they will be doing RYE documentation. And the RYE documentation is how we get our funding for the nursing envelope. So it's very, very important that that's accurate and that's encapsulates exactly what is happening on the floor. So that position will help in identifying and enacting those, those things. So that's the three hours of care, which as I said, gets us to the 3.6 hours of care. And you can see that total there on our chart. In addition to those enhancements, then we are proposing kitchen enhancements for our kitchen prep position, which is currently Monday to Friday. It's a 4.5 hour shift and we are asking that it go to, to extend to Saturdays and Sundays. This will allow us to have a consistent dietary offerings for our residents. We're currently on the weekends. We have to supplement with some more pre-made items so that we can reduce the workload on the dietary aids. So this would help with that. As you know, our building is getting older. It's 19 years old and it is needing more attention as, as it would in anybody's home. So I did provide an example of a painting contract or painting work that we have forecasted to do in 2024. And the cost associated with that. And so if you look at the cost associated with bringing on an additional part-time maintenance person, it actually, in, in my opinion, makes really good sense to, to, to do that. And then the other option, the other addition is in a data information assistant. And this position will be split between dietary and environmental. Again, because of the age of the building and the amount of complexity with supporting all of the necessary requirements related to that aging, aging that's happening, the environmental services is really struggling to keep up with their workload and keep up with all of the clerical type tasks that are associated with that. And the same, the same is happening with dietary. There, there is an awful lot of auditing that's required based on the ministry requirements now. And so again, they're also very much struggling with keeping up with the requirements of the documentation. When it comes to looking at ministry updates and ministry financial grants and, and opportunities that they provide as well as preparing the budget, the administrative supervisor can be supported very easily with this position as well. And that would be very beneficial to myself and to the home so that we can ensure that we are staying on top of the funding grants that are occurring. Finally, as you know, the Perfect Attendance Program, we trialed that last year. And I put together a report for you on that. And you can see the budget for that program last year was $25,000. And I, I outlined for you that it's, that meant no lates and no absences. And they're scanning in and scanning out. This was a really great program. It had pretty incredible results. And you can see that there, it did actually reflect the savings of $35,000 relative to the cost of it, which was very interesting. The staff were very, very positive about this program. We had some, we had three staff that had perfect attendance during the entire time. We certainly saw some reduction in absences, which also is obviously very, very helpful for the home. And, and then in addition to that, we saw a decrease in lateness. So when people are coming in late, they're not prepared. They're not able to get the, the nice transition from the previous shift so that they know what they're doing for the residents to support the residents. So you can see as well in this report that that was also improved, which was a fantastic thing. I, I send out emails on a regular basis to all those that are successful in achieving the perfect attendance. It's just a really positive program that instead of spending time disciplining on negative things, this was an opportunity for us to recognize people that are coming to work and doing a great job and then going at home at the end of the day. And essentially it paid for itself, which is great. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks Angela. I can see everyone now. I'm, I've got my stuff up on the iPad, so you don't have to announce yourself. Any questions or comments on Angela's report here?
I just, yeah. Yeah, it's an excellent report and I'm glad to see that Perfect Attendance, Perfect Attendance Pilot Program worked out. Anytime you can get about a 33% return on your money is a good deal. Excellent idea.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead. Is that Brenda?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask if Mark, our treasurer, could point out for council, the increased money that we're getting from the province for four hours of care. Because when you look at that number of the total of all enhancements is $914,000. That seems like a big number, but just want to assure you and you'll see in the budget documents themselves that we're getting more money in from the province than we did before. So it's, that's not as scary a number as one might think. So, thanks, Mark.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I can speak on to that. We have budgeted for the expected increase. The province has dictated for the four hours of care, so they have increased that funding. Last year, we maybe underestimated our budget grant amount in that regard. But it's a more accurate budget this amount. It does offset that four hours of care because it is supposed to be helpfully funded from the province. So you'll see that in the budget documents later tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any, any other question for this report? If not, we've got a recommendation that this be received and the council supports the inclusion of the proposed staffing enhancements in the 2024 preliminary budget estimates. Nathan is moving that and Doug is seconding that. All in favor? That's Gary. Thank you. The next item, item two, is communication strategy. And Tracy, I believe this is your baby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, the, at the County Council's strategic planning exercise last year, it was identified that we needed to strengthen county communications. So we reached out to one idea who does a lot of work with us on website design and our communication specialists to ask for a proposal to do a communication strategy. So this is the proposal that we got back. The idea will be that it will, they'll create branding that's consistent for all our communications, create templates, even a persona, so the way that everything sounds when it goes out to the public. So we're very hopeful that this will help with communications, but also with the employer of choice initiative. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Tracy? In that case, we have a motion to receive the report and approve the inclusion of $30,000 for the development of corporate communication strategy in the preliminary budget estimates. Henry and Tony, all in favor? Carrie, thanks. So item three is this transportation master plan. And Mr. Wager, I believe this is something you're going to address.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Warden. Through you. The transportation master plan was completed in 2014 and it's recommended to be completed every, every 10 years. We have put some money in the budget. We are asking that we do half this year and half next year. Just for the, the time constraints of the project, it will expand over two years. And staff's looking to include the 175,000 this year and 175,000 next year. Do it as a one-time cost through reserves. So it doesn't really impact the budget that much. But essentially it creates like a roughly like a 200-page document. For lack of words, it's kind of like the Bible that we use here to establish what we need to do for our operations. It looks at our existing policies or agreements, capacities of a roadway. So it's going to identify safety concerns. I've mentioned in the report, it's going to look at schools and county roads, multi-youth pathways and connections to all the communities, not, not just in one particular municipality. But it's going to identify level of service needs as well. It's going to look at intersections. For example, here in Napanee, County Road 5 and Palace Road, or Palace Road and County Road 2, like that, that intersection is starting to get overwhelmed. So it'll develop a program and a timing need for that. Similar to the Taylor Kit extension, like what it's done for us over the years and how we've maintained that is, is, that's what we're looking at. So it's going to look at other, other transportation needs and look at roads like County Road 17, how we've saw an increase of traffic of almost of, like doubling the amount in, in, in over a year. And how, how we prepare for that and plan for that financially and, and, and through the actual design of the roads. Like, do we need more right-of-way widths? All that kind of stuff. Happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Questions for Chris? Anyone? Chris, how does, how does this master plan differ from, we have a, like a road construction 10-year schedule and I assume that's, is that based on a previous transportation master plan or is this an enhancement or?
We, we have, we have a 10-year plan that's based on condition of, like, so you mean the what we have here at the county? So what we have at the county is based on condition assessments and what has been developed in the previous, in case you can't see it, I'm holding it up because green screen, but my apologies. But what has been developed in that previous plan? So it had the Taylor Kit extension. It had the, I hate to use the word bypass because it's not a bypass, but the additional road that alleviates the pressure off County Road 41. And number two, that we were just finished up the Public Information Center as part of that EA. It had some traffic and upgrades for us, like traffic lights. It had some intersection upgrades, like the roundabout at County Road 6 and 23, the one at 10 and 1, the one at 2 and 4. Was, I guess that one was in the previous one, but basically everything we use to build our capital plan and what we need to be aware of for like our long-term enhancements that we have to start planning for, that, that's what the Transportation Master Plan develops. Now, the individual roads as to like our hot mix and our surface treatment, that's just based on road conditions and, and traffic volumes and how those roads degrade over time. But the transportation master plan doesn't really look at that, although it does look at the methods we use to rehabilitate those roads. It doesn't really do the timing on those roads. That's strictly the roads need study that we do. This is just pure long-range planning to make sure that we have financial capabilities as well as, I guess, the right-of-way and, and we're planning for the future and not just, just looking at our current problems. We've got to look 10 and 20 years down the road.
Okay, thanks. That, that clarifies it for me. Thank you, Chris. Any, anyone else? Yes, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Chris, does the, does the, I know I've gone through the 2014 plan. It's a pretty neat plan. Will the new plan incorporate EDRs with respect to our municipalities? For when the 401 shut down? Does that include that in that master plan?
So EDRs is, is part of it. So I've actually drafted the RFP, just finished it about an hour ago. Just in case you guys approve it or hopefully didn't approve it. It's on file for next year or the year after, but it, it will, it will look at and evaluate the location and success of our EDRs. One road that I want the consultant to pay particular like, or have a review at is the County Road 5. Right now it's a service treated road, but it's almost like an unofficial EDR, like traffic will continue with Palace Road. And instead of going up to County Road 1 or back to the 401, they'll continue on Palace Road and go out to County Road 4. So that, that we're experiencing heavy traffic volumes there during an EDR. And that, that implicates the residents from Napanee and Loyola for that. So we will look at maybe expanding our EDRs to include that road and then ultimately look at, you know, asphalt surface and, and whatnot for there as well.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Jerry. Anyone else for Chris at this time? Then I'll entertain the motion. I recommend a motion is to receive and direct staff to include 175,000 for this master plan in the 2024 preliminary budget. Can I get a mover? Counselor Fritsch, a second by Deputy Warden Townend. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Item four is development charges. And Stephen Paul, this is your.
Thank you. So at, at the last County Council meeting, discussion was had with regards to development charges and, and council asked staff to include $65,000 in the operating budget deliberations for this evening. And additionally, there was a request for more information on development charges. And we provided two examples of development charge studies as well as frequently asked questions that Prince Edward County put together just for, for your information. I guess after the, the meeting and staff, you know, had discussions, I think this is, you know, timely with regards to Chris's presentation previously. When you're looking at a development studies report, one of the big concepts of that is an examination of long-term capital and operating costs for that capital infrastructure. And I think as we look forward at development charges, it'd be fully expected that, you know, a large percentage of our development charges that we've received through as a revenue would be then invested into our capital infrastructure of our county roads. So having said that, as there will be a transportation master plan ongoing for two years, our recommendation would be that we delay moving forward with a development charges study until the transportation master plan is complete. And we think this lines up, you know, well with council's strategic priority of looking at strategic capital planning. And certainly if development charge study is done as of this year, it would expire in one year because you'd actually need to implement development charges within one year. And that doesn't match up well with the transportation master plan. So our recommendation is to delay at this point in time until we have a better understanding of the master plan on the transportation side and can better, again, forecast and strategically plan what our capital planning would be in the future. So I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to that.
Any questions for Stephen? Yes, Counselor Hegedorn.
Thank you through you, Warden. So the master plan, the transportation master plan is going to go out over into '25. So would we be looking at near the end of '25 then looking at getting what the options would be for proceeding with the development charges? Review?
Yeah, so at that, at that time, yes, we would, we would start with the, the study and the review. And we would have all that current information from all the work that Chris's team is being done. And then once that's completed, the assessment will come back from the consulting team. And County Council would have one year then to actually implement a development charge if that was the route that you, this determined that you would like to take.
Anyone else? So I need a motion to receive and to basically postpone the development charges until the transportation master plan is complete. And seconded by Counselor Richardson. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. So our next item is Financial Services Staffing Enhancement. Mr. Day?
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Before you is a, a report on looking at staffing enhancement for the Financial Services Department. As council is aware, it was about last year at this time, we had a report from KPMG on, on the third-party review. And we had council support on going through the implementation phase of that review. I'm happy to say that we were able to do that internally. We did not have to hire a consultant with it. We had a staff member that was back-supported from some other departments. So I do want to appreciate or say my appreciation to the other departments that did help cover while we're going through that process. And it's an ongoing process that we've gone through and are going through. Part of that report is going through RASKI, which is looking at the rules and definitions for, for our department and where we're lacking and where we could need. And in the report, I highlighted some examples in some areas that we think the position will definitely help be able to facilitate the Financial Services Department on meeting our requirements and helping with their capital asset mainly and some of those purchases and some of those other items. So I'm looking for support based on that recommendation to have an enhancement for the Financial Services Department. And happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Calvert.
Yes, so I see you're looking for this person to start July 1st at $44,000. Is this would be a full-time position or is it a part-time position?
It would be a, a full-time position and that would be the financial impact for this year is half the year. So, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to receive and to enter this item into the preliminary budget estimates. Counselor Hogg and Counselor Davison, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, the next item is the grant request for Lenox and Addy County Hospital. And Mark, this is still your department. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Warden. At our last council meeting, Lenox and Addy County General Hospital came and did a, a presentation on requesting some grant or some support for their MRI machine. Before you, is, is just a little background on, on what we do with, with grants for now. Presently, we do give $75,000 a year to the University Kingston Hospitals Foundation. Normally it is our policy that we do not give grants, but we have, as you know, in, in the past, when it becomes to, for medical or for the hospital. And we had prior from 2019 to 2022, we did give LNA County Hospital $25,000 a year for four years. And that was completed in 2022. So just on that background, for example, our commitment to the University Hospitals Foundation in Kingston is 750,000. And that time it represented just a 0.51% of their total $145 million project. So I just gave for an example, if we were to do that, if council decided to do that for the local hospital, it would roughly be $18,095. Or it's up to council's discretion. I did put in the budget estimates and a placeholder. If they were to look at the same type of commitment as in the past, what that'd be for $25,000 for 10 years or $250,000 commitment. So later on in, in the agenda, I do have costing after I do go through the budget in detail on what these enhancements could look like and the effect on, on the tax rate.
Any questions for Mr. Day on this one? Counselor Hogg? You're muted, Henry.
There we go. Two years ago, the county gave Addyton Highlands a monetary donation for Doctor Attraction. And I'm pleased to announce that we have been successful and we'll have a new doctor joining us later this year. So I'd just like to say thank you before we go anything.
Thanks, Henry. That's good news. Anyone else? Counselor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This piece of equipment that the hospital is looking at purchasing is an important piece of equipment for the health of our community. It's going to be, I will suggest, be used by all of our municipalities. And maybe even some municipalities that are neighboring us. It's, it's an important piece of equipment for, for our health. I'd be in support of the $25,000 for 10 years and we'll make that by way of motion if Mr. Warden is prepared for that.
At this point, I, I guess we can, we can debate the, the funding level at this point. Is there any, any problem with that, Mark? I know you've got later on in the, in the presentation, some specifics about, about the grant. Is there any problem with, with discussing an amount at this point in the, in the agenda?
Through you, Mr. Warden. It's, it's up to council's discretion, but suggest you might want to look at all the enhancements as one to, to do it. But I do have no problem if council wants to, to move a motion now if they're, if they see so fit on the amount that they want, want to include.
Well, it's, it's your motion, Counselor Richardson. We can, we can go with the motion that's, that's recommended, which is to include in the budget estimates and discuss the specific amounts at later in the meeting. Or if you're keen to, to go at it right now, I don't have any objection myself. What's your preference?
I, 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 I'm indifferent either way, Mr. Ma, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to make sure that I explained what I felt as far as the the importance of this piece of equipment and where I was coming from. So if we want to wait, I have no problem waiting. I just wanted to make sure you were aware that if you were looking for a motion, I could make that motion now or I can wait.
I appreciate that. I, I would actually like to discuss it in, in the context of, of sort of some of the other enhancements that, that we have here. We, we may decide that we want to actually donate more than that, you know? We, we could debate that at either time. If you don't mind, if we could go with the recommendations that we have at hand and return to the specific amount later in the agenda, is that, are, are you okay with that? go with the recommendations uh, that we have at hand and return to the specific amount later in the agenda, is that uh, are, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Uh, okay. I don't have a problem. So thank you.
So, so do you want to make the existing motions then to receive and, and to include the uh, the discussion about the MRI in the budget estimates?
Yes, I would. I'll make that motion, uh, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And do I have a second? There's uh, Henry Hog, councillor Hog, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, Mark, you don't get to step down at all, I don't think, for quite a while yet. So item seven is the, is the capital levy proposed to increase. Go ahead.
Um, yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Um, during our strategic um, planning sessions with council, we did, we did touch on this topic about uh, looking at increasing our, our capital levy. Um, right now, the current policy has been two percent of our prior year's levy to go towards infrastructure capital. As you can see in the report, um, we are depleting our infrastructure reserves um, based on uh, new estimates on, on the cost for, for replacement in, in the next five years. So for council's consideration, uh, this report and then later on, uh, the end of the agenda, some of the cost implications, if we were to increase that levy by another point one two five percent or point five percent or one percent. And um, that would generate either from eighty four thousand nine hundred to another additional three hundred and thirty nine thousand six hundred if council was just to, to increase that. Um, I, I do think it's very important that we do do this. Um, I, I know next year we'll be looking at development charges and how this affect. I think it's a combination of all, all three steps we need to, to finance our capital and infrastructure to, to maintain it. Not only is it taxes. Um, and, but it also is grants and we are affected um, greatly by our grants as well. Um, we are seeing a decline in the OCF grants, so that either has to make up by uh, um, taxation. And um, this is just for council's information to, to take a look at and to contemplate if they want to uh, increase that capital levy. Um, as I mentioned before, that can be included and we can have a discussion at the end of the, the formal budget presentation on those cost implications.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, any, any questions on this one at this point? Uh, yes, uh, Brenda, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just uh, thank you, Mark. I just wanted to tag on to say we're mindful of council's um, strategic goal of looking at getting to three percent from two. So our thinking was if you had the appetite for the point two five, for example, we would suggest that that would be each year for the next four years to get you to three. Or if you had the appetite for the point five, it would be for the next two years to get you to three or doing it the, the one percent and getting to three this year, but still with the idea that I just wanted you to be aware that our thinking would be if you did the point two five or the point five, we would be suggesting that in subsequent years to eventually get you to three. That's all.
Right. Yes, that, that was our strategic planning goal. Thanks for, thanks for uh, clarifying that. There were a couple of hands up and I've forgotten whose they were. Uh, councillor Fritsch, and I'll get to you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, Mark, so it's just looking at the, the three percent, which possibly is the end goal here, but if you're looking at three percent and it's what? Three hundred, roughly three hundred and forty thousand a year. So if it was, I'm just looking at your five year forecast above, so if guess if I'm looking at this right, if it was three percent, whenever we get, if we get to that point, three percent over five years is, you know, one, whatever it is, uh, one point six million or one point seven or something. And, and I, and our X, and it looks like we're we're shy in your five year forecast of two point six. Is that, is that correct? So we're it's a sig, it's a
Yeah, it's, uh, yes, and, and the things are changing. Just through you and Mr. Warden.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it does deplete uh, on the reserves, uh, as you see the prediction uh, in there of the minus eight, eight million, but hopefully, um, you know, the grants will, will come. Like, we can't count on that. Um, but uh, also, you know, looking at uh, you know, what, what we can do, uh, depending on council service levels to what they, what they want to maintain. Um, current service levels this has taken into consideration. So there are a lot of factors, but yes, this will help uh, um, eliminate uh, that shortfall and council can also look at reserve policies and if we have uh, looking at total reserves across um, the county, if there is, we can deem some maybe excess in some other areas that we can transfer them to the ones that we are short in. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Doug, did you, did you have anything more, Tony, at this point?
Uh, no, just a comment and that obviously it makes a significant dent in a, in, in our problem. Uh, it doesn't solve it on its own as you're explaining, Mark, but that's fine. That's great. It, it's probably a good step to get there eventually. Yep.
Thanks, Tony. Doug, did you have something?
Yeah, my, my question is for Mark. I have a question first of all. And that is if I'm reading right down a little farther in the, in the program tonight, we're looking at a forty two dollar increase for the two percent increase is to the average taxpayer. Is that right, Mark?
Correct. Um, per what's in the, in the policy, I will go through it in detail in the budget. It's forty two uh, dollars on the average assessed property in, in the county.
And that's including all the requests that have been made.
It, no, so that's what there, there is some, there is a differential of the two line there. So that the levy capital levy increase is not in there. Uh, the grant to the hospital is not in, in the budget, current budget.
Okay.
The financial services department enhancement is not in the current budget, but we can go through it at the end of the, the budget presentation as well.
I mean, I, I'll be quite honest, I have a concern. I, I'm very glad to see that uh, there's no increases coming from impact this year, but we know as soon as that opens up, there will be a huge impact to the rate pairs coming. So if we're gonna make any moves at all, it's this year. So I, I don't know if we need to discuss this at the, a little farther down when we're looking at all in one package. But I, I am supportive personally of some increase to go to reserves just for now.
Hey, thanks, Doug. Anyone else at this point? Yeah, if, if we could look at, at, at these uh, uh, different requests that aren't in the draft budget as a group at the end where it does appear in the, in the final analysis, I think that would be a preference because then we've got a context and we can prioritize. Um, so could I get a, a mover to uh, receive this and to include this in the uh, uh, in the discussions subsequent to uh, our, our draft budget? So mover, uh, councillor Richardson and deputy warden Townend, all in favor? Gary, thank you. And Mark, your next item is the uh, propose, the uh, twenty twenty four property assessment. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, through you, uh, Mr. Warden. Uh, yes, we have received our, our tax rule assessment for two thousand and twenty four. Um, you can see we're, um, the countywide, we have a two point seven percent growth um, for this year, which does help, help offset uh, our levy increase um, by nine hundred and twenty three thousand. Um, I like to keep in mind too, later on the presentation, you'll see we do have a a tax um, equivalent increment equivalent grant uh, that's in the budget for one of the properties in the county that we're expecting to pay out in two thousand and twenty four. Um, so this uh, also want to mention that there was no reassessment, uh, as councillor Davidson did allude to. Um, I have not had any word on when the next um, assessment will be. Uh, the next budget report, I will be doing the annual tax policy report uh, to council. The draft budget that you see before you tonight is prepared with the same tax ratios as, as last year. Um, and we'll be looking at if council does wish to, to change uh, those ratios. Um, just as a prelude that um, as council is aware, any change in, in the ratio just shifts uh, the burden of the tax dollar to the different property holders. It doesn't change the total amount that we do require by levy. Um, but this is your, your information purposes uh, on uh, what we're looking at for assessment growth uh, for two thousand and twenty four. Cause any changes in the assessment rule is either due from uh, growth or deletions or, or changes to properties, not from a reassessment.
Any questions for Mr. Day on this item? Um, I need some clarification, Mark, uh, on a couple of things. Um, one specific one is the uh, the tax, the tax increment equivalent grant. Is, is, that's not actually a cash grant. It's a forgiveness of taxes. Is, is that right? Or can you, can you explain that? I, I don't see why that would be a cost if it's not revenue that we were expecting anyway, because the development hasn't even occurred yet.
Um, through you, Mr. Warden. From, from my understanding, it will be a cash grant. Um, the, from under that policy, the property owners do have to pay their taxes. And under our agreement um, with the lower tiers, the lower tier will, will issue our portion of the grant to the lower tier and the lower tier will refund uh, that grant portion to the property owner. And it's only based on the increase in assessment. So I've done analysis on the property that uh, we're looking at for this year and that, that's the amount in there is our county portion, an estimate of the taxes that we'd be paying to the lower tier who in turn would turn to the property. So it is a, a cash grant that, uh, from my understanding of how that process works.
Okay, so it's, it's kind of an accounting exercise, but funds do change hands. And then the, the property owner pays the, the full amount of tax, the, the municipality reimburses some of that tax in effect. Is that, am I grasping it?
Yes, that, that, and that's my understanding as well.
Okay, all right. So that's, that clarifies that. And I guess the other thing is, and, and councillor Davidson alluded to this a little bit. Once the uh, once impact finally gets itself back together and, and, and does a reassessment, does that necessarily have a, a major impact on, on taxpayers? Or does it simply mean we've got a, a larger uh, assessment value um, to raise, you know, a similar amount of money that we usually do? Would, would not the, uh, unless someone's assessment changes radically, uh, we're simply uh, try, trying to get the same amount of revenue out of people. It would lower the tax rate, would it not? Can you, can you explain that in a less sort of stumbling way than I'm trying to explain it?
Through you, Mr. Uh, Warden, you're exactly right. Um, I guess one analogy to look at it is like if you have a, a different crops on a farm and you have a, or an apples, you have different types of apples and you have uh, one year you might have an increase in, in a yield or, or a certain type of apple, you can charge a lower price and get the same amount of revan, revenue. So you're right, if our assessments go up in total, if we require the same amount of levy, the tax rate should go down correspondingly, the equal amount, they generate the same amount of revenue.
Okay, that, that's good. That, that clarifies that. So, so there's not some major hit coming to property owners that, out of, out of a reassessment then?
The only, the only thing I can say is if there's a shift between classes. Like a different burden and we saw that with water, a few, two assessments ago, we saw that with waterfront property. Um, they had a bigger increase in, in, in assessment value compared to residential and the other property classes. And then again, the last uh, reassessment, it was the farm, farm properties received a, a increase or um, a greater increase relative to the other property classes. Um, so yes, it, that mix does affect, um, but overall, if you're looking at it simplified for the more assessment we have, we can lower the rate to generate the same amount of, of tax revenue.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mark. Any, anything else for Mark at this point? In that case, I just need a motion to receive this report. Uh, councillor Calvert, councillor Fritsch, all in favor? Gary, thank you. Okay. Now your real work begins, Mark. Here's, here's the big item, the twenty twenty four draft budget. It's all yours.
It's through you, Mr. Warden. I guess before um, I start uh, going through the budget document, I just want to maybe refresh council and new members of county council, just on the process that the directors do do on the budget. So I will, I'd like to share my screen and uh, just maybe show you one quick department's uh, um, budget details quickly and then we'll go through, I have a PowerPoint for the budget documentation. So I'll share my screen if I can, Mr. Warden and
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. And uh, everyone see my screen? Yeah. Um, and forgive me if I'm looking sideways because I'm looking at two different screens here. So if I'm not looking directly at council or the public, I, I, I do apologize. So um, first of all, I do want to um, thank uh, all of the directors and all the staff on, on putting the budgets uh, together. It's a lot of work and it's a great team that we do here at the county and uh, how everyone does uh, uh, participate and help each other because it is a big process to get this all put together for, for council presentation. But just, um, so you're aware, if we look, um, each director will go into um, their overall um, their budget. So we have thousands of different accounts. What you're presenting with tonight in the budget practice is actually a summary, are these summary sheets here? Um, the finance department goes through and updates all of the, the salaries. Um, any changes, uh, withholdings, tax rates and any salary adjustments uh, that are presented. We, we'll do that. Um, the directors and departments will go through their uh, areas and do um, for, change their budgets accordingly, uh, take into account obviously expected cost uh, adjustments and changes in, in operations. This uh, detail that we have, you see in the actual, this is, this is actually comes from our financial software system. So we have thousands of GL accounts and the classifications are explained in the budget documents. So this gets um, downloaded from, from our actual expenditures um, from our system. The budget document is paired um, from, from the, the directors and from ourselves on, on the payroll items. And they get uh, uploaded to this budget sheet, which this is an automatic process that we do have in place that gets uploaded to our financial software. And what council sees tonight are the, the, the summary sheets on, on these classifications and the overall impact on the levy. But I just want to, you know, um, assure council that uh, um, there's a lot of details involved and we do have, have the details on the line items specifically if council ever wanted to go down that route. But I, I just thought it would be as good for council to see the whole um, process that we do go through uh, to come up uh, with the levy changes. So that was just a real brief summary, but um, that uh, um, if council doesn't have any questions, I'll move on to the, the budget presentation.
Any questions for Mark on this item? Carry on, Mark.
So uh, obviously tonight we're going to be going through both the operating and, and capital budgets and um, we will be um, looking at uh, obviously all the areas and some of those enhancements uh, at the end. Uh, I will summarize to which are included in this budget and which are not included. Some of the, the overall, just a draft uh, budget highlights is uh, we're looking at net levy change right now of uh, two point one percent or seven hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred and seven. Um, the net levy change in the operating of four hundred and eighteen and the net change in capital of three hundred and seven. Just for council reference, uh, the average residential assessment, some residential property type types in the county is two hundred and sixty one thousand, last year is two fifty nine. And that represents a tax increase right now of uh, forty two dollars and forty one cents. And for reference to council, uh, a one percent change in our levy for this year relates to approximately three hundred and thirty nine thousand five hundred from, a change from last year. This um, slide actually shows a, a breakdown on the levy change, uh, kind of summarized by, by department. Um, the certain areas that make up that net increase of seven hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred and seven. So you can see uh, a good chunk of, of that is our capital levy of six hundred and ninety eight thousand increase. Um, which is their policy of the two percent uh, of the prior year's levy plus um, the levy capital levy increase for, for social housing. JPC, um, the net levy change of two hundred and twelve thousand is mainly due to the, to the four hours of care and uh, some of those other staffing adjustments. Um, healthcare, um, that, that is our, our contributions uh, to the Kingston, Bryan, Atlantics and Addington Public Health. And we'll go through in details in each department as we go through this, just a quick summary. Economic development, obviously, that's that TEAG grant we just talked about, about a hundred and fifty thousand of that increase i- is in there. And then the various other breaks down to get to that seven twenty five. Our, our budget, um, as you can see now, we're actually over a hundred million dollars. So our, our revenue, um, is a hundred and three million five hundred and forty two thousand. Um, council can, can see uh, how much we're reliant on, on grants for a lot of our, our services here at the upper tier. It's running at, at the forty seven, forty seven percent, uh, or roughly forty eight, a little over forty eight million. Um, property taxes, uh, at thirty five point six million represents about thirty four point four um, percent. Uh, recoveries uh, include um, for the Uh, recoveries uh include um for the the palace um. Billings um from Prince Edward County for, as we're the service provider for social services. And um transfers to reserves and a small um cross border um billings that we do have for ambulance services. Next is uh the expense um expenses um by type. Um, that should be a hundred and five thousand five forty two. There's a typo on the top. As the match revenue, apologize for that, just saw that now. Um, but um, it does. Uh, you know, we are, um, you can see where where the services and where those expenses um do do relate and and how they're uh. Um, broken down by by service area. This um, this slide uh just represents in in your agenda, it's a page uh thirty five on your agenda package, not the budget report. Just the the breakdown of that uh average uh tax bill for for a county portion, it would be fifteen hundred dollars. And there's the the breakdown of the services and and where that fifteen hundred dollars uh gets broken out to. So infrastructure service represents forty five percent or about seven hundred dollars. Um, next is health services, it represents thirty three percent. Five hundred dollars. And um, social services are is roughly around eleven percent or a hundred and seventy, community development. Uh, services approximately ten percent or a hundred and fifty dollars of of that bill. Again, this is uh the executive summary highlights. This is usually what we do uh when we send it with the tax bills. This is kind of, this will get updated after council finalizes the budget. On uh on what we do highlight to to the public on 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 the highlights of the budget again. Um, that fifteen hundred dollars or an increase of forty two, forty one. Um, the budget includes staffing enhancements uh to the John M. Parrot Center. A nineteen point one million in in capital improvements to county roads and bridges, uh mainly county road to uh construction through Adessa. We do have in a budget uh one point four two million of federal gas tax money and one point one from the province and. Um, Ontario Community Infrastructure Grant. And we're also budgeting nine hundred and forty seven thousand. Uh, for John and Parrot Center and capital and same with capital municipal county owned buildings of six hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred. And about nine hundred and twenty thousand for social housing. And in here, we do still have the seventy five thousand dollar commitment to um University Hospital, Kingston Foundation. This again, um just summarizes the other one table showed that where we got to the seven hundred and twenty five nine oh seven. This is actually a little bit more detailed, same, basically the same information on the county levy changes. Um, that you do see uh before you from from the departments, um getting down to um. Before growth of uh one point six million, levy increase, the net of growth of uh nine hundred and twenty three thousand. There's a net um tax levy increase of seven hundred and twenty five thousand or two point one percent. And the tax rate is expected to to go up by the same amount. Uh, also for for information purposes, uh in in your budget budget package story is um. Our asset management plan, and these are the asset replacement values that were presented um last year, but they will be um. Updated as we go through the asset management uh updates this year. Um, but it is um what is good to to note that um. That our annual expenditure requirement was uh predicted to be thirty six point uh four million. This year with our our capital spending increases, uh our our funding gap um is now at fifteen point two million. Last year it was over, it was seventeen million. So we are making strides in into reducing that funding gap. And we'll continue to do so as we look at uh updating the asset management plan and looking at steps that we can do to. To improve that and to maintain our infrastructure. Here's um also like to go over where we're where we're at with our reserves uh as of now. Um, so the two thousand twenty three estimated balance, uh obviously this is subject to. To um audit and final year end adjustments. So we're looking at the twenty six million um in reserves at the end of two thousand and twenty three. And this is across uh the whole county. And there's your your breakdown on the um on the different areas that the reserves are allocated to. Here's um, you see a trend, we've been fortunately been building up a reserves over the last few years, but uh as we kind of touched on earlier in that other report. Um, we are predicting that uh we'll we start utilizing more and more of them. Um, if we don't um. Do some other steps to to uh help uh reduce that that depletion. Here's a summary of of our current debt. Um, right now it's at one point three million. Part of that is uh our portion of the Kingston Frinek Public Health uh for council's information, our share of that budget. It's uh there's three municipalities that fund that health unit and uh. I know there might be going through some changes or amalgamation, so who knows what that might look like in the future, but uh right now. Uh, we're twenty one point three percent of the Kingston Frinek uh health unit. I believe Kingston is around sixty seven percent and Frinek County is the remaining thirteen thirteen percent. And the John and Parrot Center uh will be um completed and paid off uh this year. On that debt will will no longer be outstanding. And the other is uh one of the mortgages on our social housing um properties. And uh it's up for renewal um this year. Um, it's up for another renewal for this year. Right now, this is uh looking at um. Our estimated surplus, again, just want caution council that this is still subject to audit and um. Year end adjustments and um well, obviously presenting it back a final picture once the year end audit is completed. And then with the financial statement presentation to council from from K P M G. Uh, just for reference, uh last year's surplus, two thousand twenty two is at three point five million for the county. Next, uh we're s- started going into um our overall uh budget. These um, first I would like to go through, health councils had a chance to read the 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 budget packages. And on pages forty seven to forty nine on the agenda, um really, kind of, there's some. Detailed to how we classify the classifications on on our revenues and expenses. And how they're recorded and classified, and that's how the the budget is presented for for your half year or for your um. Review here. So here is a total uh um county budget by by those line items. Um, and how that breaks down um overall is from that earlier summary. Next is uh the summary of our um salaries and wages changes. Uh, in this budget, proposed uh budget that's presented tonight, uh as per. Um, prior discussions, it does represent a three percent non-union uh increase. As well, uh effective April first, as well as the market uh uh review uh adjustment uh April first. Um, that was priorly discussed to council. So that this budget does take in consideration all of those factors. Next, as we get into um our operating budgets, uh this is the operating budget summary again. Uh, by those classifications that uh we use to uh record the budget and uh. Um, that ties into all our financial system as well. So we will be going through um. Uh, right now, next is the department's operating budgets and. I don't know if you want to ask question through you, Mr. Warren, at this time or hold them to the end, but it's uh. Um, we can go through it. I know staff is prepared to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any any questions on what Mark has presented to up to this point? Uh, non-fortcoming, Mark. Um, so i- is each uh department uh head going to just sort of step in and and. Uh, address their portion of the draft budget here? Is that the plan?
Well, um, usually, I think I'll I'll go through you, Mr. Ward, and I'll go through it. If council has specific questions, um. There there's some little brief summaries on that, but uh I'm sure that the directors will be willing to step in and answer any specific questions that if council has any.
Okay, so you'll shoulder the whole burden here. Carry on, thank you.
Um, so so over here is is actually the general government and um basically. Um, this is uh is our our revenue. The other revenue, um you see uh listed above. Is is actually uh payments in lieu of taxes, um supplementary taxes, omits and its net of um. Any uh expected tax write offs that we may have. Um, the payments to agencies, uh that is the the payment to uh impact. Um, they went, um, their levy or their charge uh to us went up two point seven percent. And it's uh up to seven hundred and twenty two thousand, so that is the charge that we do pay to unpack for further work.
Even though they didn't reassess anything.
No, but they, yeah, uh, I won't comment on that, I guess. Uh, this is a county council's budget. Um, obviously, we had talked about, uh, I think before tonight is a is a is your bylaw for remuneration. Uh, materials supplies, it's uh showing an increase due to E O W C, uh costs increase that they had and and some uh. Uh, council events that are that are planned and pro- and promotional items. Next is uh corporate administration. Um, again, this is uh discussed earlier. This is where you see that communication increase of thirty thousand dollars. It's uh included in that materials and supplies. Uh, amount in there and the others are um, uh, obviously the salaries and wages increases and other small other line items. Human resources, finance and technology, this is the areas that we call for program support. You see that um there's no levy impact when you're looking at this department as general. But when you see internal transfers to the other departments, so this, so finance, uh I T. And H R, um our expenses, uh they get charged out to the other departments and that's based on. Uh, takes into um F T E uh equivalents, the head counts. Along with uh their prior year's budget and it gets allocated and it's a uh a formula that's been consistently used and accepted by the province. And how to allocate the program support to the other departments. And I should, I do want to mention as in the bottom there too, um, some increases i- in I T costs. Uh, some items that we would normally sometimes in the past classify as capital items as one time expenses. A lot of the software companies are going to what they call, I'm sure you face this in your lower tiers, the subscription type of model billing system where you have to pay. Uh, annually and per user and um and it's an ongoing licensing fee. And that's where these costs have gotten transitioned from what used to be a capital expense maybe um down to an operating expense and it's an annual expense. Just for council's information. Provincial offenses, um fortunately, at last year, um a- as council is aware, this is where we had make a a big adjustment in our revenue. Predictions and we have, um, we're predicting that revenue will 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 hold the line uh this year compared to last year's budget. Um, some of the expenses though have increased due to uh um. More um prosecution, body cam review, some expenses related to that and disclosure requirements that we are. Uh, having to to undertake, uh it started actually in two thousand twenty three in the fall of two thousand and twenty three. So basically, um, this area is is holding the line, which it which is fort- fortunate, but uh. As ca- council is aware, it's hard to predict um ticket revenue and the amount of fines that we will be able to to collect during the year. Um, again, uh here is the roads and and bridges um. Operating, um you can see it does stick out there as a the one time transfer, as we mentioned earlier, um the hundred and seventy five thousand for the transportation. Um, master plan update, it is an operating expense, but it's a one time expense, well, one time for this year and then next year. And we're proposing that it does uh come out of reserves, uh because it's not an ongoing operating cost that 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 we do have. It's a, it's a one time um large payment that uh we're looking at uh. Putting out this year for for that plan. Property services like program support, this is uh for the county owned properties. Um, it actually gets charged out to to the different departments um um where who works in in most departments as well. Um, a little loss uh i- in revenue due to the memorial building we're using internally now, as council is aware, it used to be rented out. Um, but we are using it internally, so there's a little bit of a reduction in revenue there. Health um services, uh again, this is um. Basically, the the payment to um Kingston Frinek, Atlantic and Public Health. Um, their their fee this year went up two and a half uh percent. Uh, it's a little over one point four million dollars that we do pay, went up about thirty four thousand. And also in here is um the transportation grant program, uh it's an in and out uh with the grant that we do. Um, expect to receive and the amount that we will be paying out. And then also the seventy five thousand dollar um donation to Kingston um Health Sciences Foundation. Next to operating is uh the John M. Parrot Center. Um, as you can see, the the net levy change is is two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred, that was summarized earlier. You see the expected increase in grant revenue of two point four million. And then uh our total expenses increases of two point six million, obviously, the majority of that is under salaries and wages. And that also not only does it reflect the four hours of care, but any um expected the union negotiations and salary um rate changes. That we are uh expecting to have in two thousand and twenty four. Next is um paramedic services, um number one, um you can see. Um, we are expecting a little bit of a revenue, revenue is based on. Um, the funding from the province is fifty percent of your prior year's operating budget. So that then that a four point nine million, it really relates to fifty percent uh of our last prior year's budget roughly. Um, that we expect to get. The staffing model changes uh going from s- um salaries and wages to a contract. Um, yes, you can see it's it's illustrated here in this budget. And then the the next two, two slides, one is the the two different community paramedic uh programs we have, one is uh high intensity. Uh, the and these projects have to be um fully funded by the province and that's what we expect it to to pay. Or um, that's what we're hoping um to, and if there's any shortfall, uh we would have to make up. Or if there's any underspent, then uh it might be due back to the province. And uh this is the long term care, community paramedics, um. Program as well, so the prior one was three hundred and sixty five thousand, we get annually and this one is a million dollars last year. Two thousand twenty three, uh we thought there was a carryover from the year before, that's why the budget amount had one million two hundred and fifty thousand, but it was one million. Uh, emergency planning, uh we are, there is an application that we have. Uh, and it's included in the budget to uh Emergency Management Ontario, and I believe it's for some equipment and uh supplies that uh. Um, we have put the grant in and it's a roughly forty four thousand, so if we aren't successful in that grant. They would just, we, that revenue would not come in and we would not be spending that money, but we have put it in the budget in hopes that we are successful and do get it. Economic development, um, again, the changes, uh obviously you see the 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 big uh change over that hundred and fifty eight. But a hundred and forty eight of that is the, that's where the tax uh. Increment equivalent grant i- is allocated to, so that's uh why there's that increase in there. So through you, Mr. Ward, and as you alluded to before, that's where the the in and out come in, that's, we had it in the revenue net growth. Of nine hundred and twenty five thousand, but we also increased our expenses by that, by that amount as well, so it's really no effect on that. Land, use planning, just uh some contract uh. Um, services are going down, doing uh we're uh up to date in some of the studies that we did do on the official plan updates. So we are reducing uh grant and expenditures in in that regard. Library services, um just some staffing changes and um updates. And um we're looking at a net levy increase for the library board that's. We're looking at a net levy increase for the library board that's shared amongst the three municipalities of a hundred and six thousand two fifty. Museum and Archives, uh similar situation and um we're looking at the an increase of sixty seven thousand. Social assistance, uh social services, sorry, um obviously council is aware that we're the consolidated service manager for Lenox and Anington and Prince Edward County. Um there the cost share formula takes into consideration uh social assistance caseload uh weighted assessment and housing units in each county. For two thousand and twenty four, um our share, Lennox and Acton's share is um going up to sixty four point two six percent. Of the cost sharing and it was sixty three point nine one percent last year in two thousand twenty three. And correspondingly, Prince Edward County share is going uh from thirty six point oh nine percent down to thirty five point seven one percent. Palace's uh budget overall reflects uh um an increase of um three point three percent from two thousand and twenty three. Um however, that just a little bit of shift in the cost share, um our increase uh goes represents a three point eight percent increase or a hundred and forty six thousand three hundred. And this is actually the so- social assistance component of that overall budget. And um you can see uh some of the um highlights uh a- at the bottom of that and it's also included in in your agenda package on on some of the changes and uh. The one thing is to note that uh we've seen uh over the last two years, our employment assistance um. Transitional funding from seven hundred and seventy one thousand down to two hundred and fifty two thousand. Next uh is the children's services, um there's been a lot of changes uh with the Canada Y, the early uh learning program and childcare program. Been able to hold the line for this year, two thousand and twenty four to thirteen thousand nine hundred, but I would like really to highlight in counseling your package on page ninety eight of the agenda. Sorry, or um ninety seven, some of the challenges that uh childcare services is looking at facing for two thousand and twenty five. And um uh it's something I, you know, want to bring to your attention now or. Hopefully uh some of that administration funding uh will come or they'll make their change announcement, we are predicting a a big hit for two thousand and twenty five and we'll have to look at ways. To to address that in the future. Social housing, um you can see that the I mean increase expected of of um fifty eight thousand four hundred. And then the nonprofit uh funding that we do provide uh to the nonprofit housing corporations uh across the two counties. And um those costs uh are reflected in in this budget. And for council's information, there is the palace meeting tomorrow that their budget will be presented and hopefully approved as well at at tomorrow's uh meeting. And housing and homeless programs looking uh for really a status quo i- in in that regard. Okay. Hey, with that, uh through you, Mister Warden, uh that kind of wraps up the the summaries of of the operating changes that we're going to be going through uh. Uh the department, the the um capital budgets. And um as in the past, if uh you have any questions on any specific projects, I'm sure the directors would be um more than happy to to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, Mark, uh maybe at this point I'll just ask if councils had uh any questions on the uh um operating portion of the budget that that uh Mark's been through so far, uh Council Richardson.
Uh thank you, Mister Warden, and I don't, I think maybe uh I could probably direct this question to uh either Mister there or uh. Miss Orchard, with respect to the um operating budget. Um for paramedic services, I know that uh in the accomplishments, it it talks about uh and we've had discussions, uh I don't think it's a surprise with respect to our uh. Medical tiered response agreement, and I'll keep it really quite simple, is there enough movement within this budget um that if. Adjustments need to be made to the um medical tiered uh response agreement. Um that it can be done within this budget, I guess is the simplest way to put it.
Through you, Mister Warden, if I could, if I could answer, I'd be happy to.
Yes, go ahead, Brenda.
So obviously, as you're aware, um councillor. With the first response that the lower tiers provide with the fire departments, which is greatly appreciated, that is, it's not uh remunerated back to the lower tiers. It's a service the lower tiers can choose to provide or not to provide, but I'm aware that um. Uh your lower tier has had some issues and concerns about the cost of the the tiered response, so. Um Mike can certainly, our interim chief can certainly speak to the fact that. We absolutely are open to you changing that first, that uh tiered response agreement, that memorandum of understanding to reduce. The number of calls that you go out to and how you respond to them and all of that, we're always open to that, happy to take that back for council to approve. But I know what you're referring to, I think, is would we consider an emergency response vehicle or a rapid response unit, is that what you're asking? And I'm expecting that that is, and if so, I can give council more information.
Yeah, I I didn't know whether you wanted to get into um in that far end of the weeds or not, Brenda.
No, I I think I think it's warranted because it affects the other lower tiers, if it's something that you wanted us to look at, it's. And I know uh Mike has done some preliminary costing that he could throw out, but it's not. I guess if it's something you were interested in, I would suggest that you would make a re- uh motion to request a staff report. To um consider the value of implementing a rapid response unit or emergency response vehicle, so. But just for the benefit of the other councillors, because they haven't been privy to the conversations that we've had, like with yourself and with councillor Calver. Um uh rapid and Mike could probably speak to this better, but I'll just say I I implemented it when I was in Huron County. We had an emergency response vehicle is one paramedic in a vehicle that can go to calls and get there quickly. And so the fire department wouldn't have to be called out, for example. The benefit of having a rapid response unit or emergency response vehicle in my eyes, because it's one paramedic, it doesn't get dispatched by the dispatch center. To go across the border to do calls in Kingston or or other counties. So because the concern about adding another ambulance would be the cost of two paramedics, but also the fact that. If it's the closest vehicle that's available, it could get called into Kingston in off and get stuck in offload delay and we're just. We've lost the vehicle and the purpose for what that vehicle was intended. Uh so that's certainly something we could look at, my suggestion would be that you would make a motion that we requesting a staff report. That we could come back with detailed information for council. Uh but I think Mike might wanna, might give better details than what I said.
Mike, do you, Mike, do you want to uh supplement Brenda's comments on on this uh concept?
Uh sure, it's for yourself, Warden, uh certainly, um we can prepare a report for council to come back if. They're um asking questions about a rapid response program in the county. And uh in particular, um in in the area of Napanee, um but we can, we can have a look at that and um. Uh just for your reference, a rapid response program, if you were to operate it twenty four seven, would require fo- for. Um uh you know, F T Es based on the uh type of, or sorry, two F T Es based on the. Um if it's a twelve hour or potentially up to four, if it's a uh a twenty four hour uh type of unit. And we would, um yeah, just basically come back with that, they would be able to respond to both high acuity and low acuity calls to I. Uh ensure that our resources are uh available to respond to the calls that need to respond to, so there's lots of. Um uh things to unpack there and uh certainly can provide you with more information and uh costing on that. Um and additionally, with respect to the first comments, um yes, we are a hundred percent open to working towards uh creating uh tiered response agreements that are patient centric. Um and that's uh also account for the safety of our responders and the safety of uh patients in our community and so um certainly can have more discussion on that at some point.
Thanks, Mike. Council Richardson, what's uh what's your preference here?
Uh uh thank you, Mister Warden, and and I apologize to uh both Mister there and uh Miss Orchard that uh um. I didn't want to get that far into the weeds, but I'm glad that we did, I think it was a very good explanation as to uh the situation that we're in uh. Uh I'll leave it uh in the hands of the clerk or you, Mister Warden, whether you would entertain a a motion. For um uh staff to bring back a report with respect to the rapid response vehicle uh now, or if you want to do it at the end, uh whichever is uh. Um I guess advantageous to us this evening with respect to this budget uh uh meeting.
I I think because it's a specific issue and it's uh uh doesn't need to be deliberated in terms of of budgeting costs at this point, I'd go ahead and make your motion now.
Yep, thank you, and Mister Warden, I'd like to make the motion that uh staff uh um investigate and bring back uh details and costs related to a rapid response vehicle uh. Um with respect to the county, um be it one vehicle or two vehicles, one north of the four one, one south of the four one. Uh when it's convenient to staff and hopefully um. Uh if there's any budget implications that those but those those implications could be included in the twenty twenty four budget. Kind of wordy and um I apologize, but I think uh I'm hoping Madam clerk gets gets the gist of what I'm trying to say.
Yes, and Brenda, did you want to uh add something there?
I'm just seeking for some clarification, um councillor Richardson, if your desire is. Potentially to see something executed this year, like say September or what whatever it might be, then. Then we should bring that back to you at the next meeting on the tw- February twenty first, if your desire is to see something to be considered for this budget. So you're not talking about review it this year, do a report implemented in twenty twenty five's budget. Your desire is for council to consider implementing it in the twenty twenty four budget, am I? Understand?
If, if that that is all possible, and I know uh it's kind of at the eleventh hour, but uh um. I I would hope or would like to see that if it's possible, if it isn't, it isn't, but uh that would be my 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 best hope, I guess, uh Brenda.
I think we could do our best to endeavor, even if we get, if it's more ballparkish numbers, but as close as we can get to. For the, for February twenty first, for council to consider before you finalize the budget, um we can.
Okay, so that that would be, that would be a specific uh date for that report to uh for a meeting later this month and uh councillor Richardson, uh we we would have to include that in in your motion then.
Yeah, if we could include that in the motion uh that date, uh and like once again, I apologize to uh staff uh. Uh for the quick turnaround.
Well, I'm sure they'll do their best, do I have a second or for that?
I I just wanted, were we looking at doing a twelve, um gathering a report on a twelve hour and a twenty four hour or just straight twenty four hour?
Uh through you, Mister Chair, if if I could, councillor Calver, I think we would look to give you some options on.
Okay.
What the cost would be for to trial one this year instead of maybe two, like one or two. Um starting it in July first or September first, some of it depends on. How fast we could recruit and actually actually execute on it. So we'll, we'll try to give you as many options as we can within that.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, so we'll have, so are you seconding that, Brian?
I'll I'll second that, sure.
Okay, uh we've got a motion on the floor, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Uh anything, anything?
Thank you, Mister Ward.
Yeah, sure, great, uh anything further for Mark at this point, uh before we get into capital budget? Not seeing anyone else, Mark, uh hope you've caught your breath and had a drink of water, carry on.
Okay, through you, Mister Warden, thank you, um here's a a capital summary uh on the overall capital levy increase of uh six hundred and ninety eight thousand. Uh as mentioned uh earlier, um it's a two percent uh levy increase on the prior year's levy, uh represents six hundred and seventy nine thousand, that's six ninety eight. And the other nineteen thousand is uh L and A's share of the commitment uh for Palace Housing of a twenty five thousand annual increase and our share of that is nineteen thousand. So that's where the six hundred and ninety eight thousand uh uh levy increase uh for the capital comes up. We do uh combination, we use our reserves and the levy uh to finance our capital acquisitions and um that's been a longstanding um. Practice of of county council and uh we are, as you know, looking at seeing about increasing that uh prior year levy amount uh uh percentage. That being said, um the next, the the first one we'll look at is uh administration and technology is basically this is I T. Um this does get allocated out uh to the other departments because it is a program support. And we do allocate uh three hundred thousand um annually to the other departments, that amount has not changed. Uh in quite a few years and you can see our expenditures are expected to be six hundred and nineteen thousand this year. So the balance has to be made up from the transfer of reserves to to um get an uh levy increase of zero on that. Next is uh the ten year capital plan, so throughout the the tonight's capital, you'll you'll see the current year um expenditures and then you'll see a ten year uh capital plan. And I think this is if uh you do have any questions through you, Mister Warden, if you have any uh on some of the projects that are planned, um that would be the best time maybe by department to to go through some of them.
Yeah, that's fine, at at any time then, council, uh if you have questions, and I'll just tell you, uh because uh we're screen sharing. Uh I've got gallery view, but I can only see at this point uh councillor Davison. Councillor Calver and councillor Richardson unless I sort of shift the little arrow, so councillors Hegador and Hog. Rich and Deputy Warden Townend, if you have a question, you're going to actually have to verbalize to get my attention at this point. Uh go ahead, Mark.
Uh next, obviously, is the majority of our capital spending expenditures and is uh for roads and bridges and um. You can see we're looking at the spending uh nineteen million this year. Um and uh the there's the net two percent levy increase of six hundred and seventy nine thousand help support that. Um throughout uh the your budget package, and I do have it on on the slides or are um. The the maps, on and this is the map, I don't know how well you guys can see this on my screen. Um this is um the major road construction projects proposed for two thousand and twenty four to twenty eight. Um and again, if you uh have any questions, then uh you know, I'm sure Mister Wager would be more than happy to to answer any. So here is the the major projects or special projects instruction plans and you can see um how it's uh broken down and uh what what they're looking at doing and those amounts on what they're looking at spending. Uh this is the map of of the bridge and major um structure projects proposed for two thousand twenty four and twenty eight. And then these uh and this is in your package as well, obviously, are are the details on what what projects are 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 looking at. And as Mister Wager mentioned earlier, it's based on both the condition and our asset management plan and uh. Huge combination of factors that are taken into consideration and along with the working with the lower tiers on my projects that they have and through their tax committee, they do like to coordinate. Their projects and make sure we're not duplicating or tearing up a road after someone else has already been there to do some work. This is uh the proposed uh hot mix um projects for two thousand twenty four to twenty eight. And you can see on the top line uh which ones are 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 looking at for this year. And then again, the details. So the top table is the two thousand and twenty four, um what roads they're looking at doing. And there's the six to ten years further out. And then the major surface treatment projects, uh there's a north map, uh then the next map is is for the southern part of the county. And again, the details for, for council's reference. And the micro-surfacing, uh, treatment projects. And this, uh, obviously i- is a very good summary on, uh, on, uh, our ten year, um, projections, um, not only are, are the costs with the different categories in here, um, but also the, the looking at, at funding. Um, and I don't know if Mr. Wager can correct me, but I think our OCIF was at one point three million, and they've lowered it, it's lowered the last couple of years, and it's um, projected to be one point one million, so, um, obviously, uh, we take advantage of any funding that does get announced and apply for it to help reduce our reliance on, on those reserves, and to take advantage of any funding that does come available. And, uh, I mean, that's the benefit of having, um, up to date records and information, um, with our asset management plan and our condition reports that, uh, um, we, a lot of these funding projects are, need to be shovel ready, and, uh, if we have all the background stuff and work done, then we're we're ready to go to put an application in to get that funding, because, uh, I know in the past sometimes there's a very quick turnaround on, when they want those applications in, and then you have to be ready to go. Next is, um, property services. Um, and I do want to point out when we start getting into all the other departments, we have not changed, uh, the county levies, um, per department in, in, in quite some time, it's never been changed since I've been here, I think it was probably five or ten years maybe before, uh, I was here that, uh, those levy amounts have changed, and that's why we see, do see a depletion in the reserves, um, uh, because we have not changed those amounts only for, for road projects, have we put that whole increase into that? Um, but for council's reference, I will be doing for a report for next council on our two thousand and twenty two surplus and the allocation to reserves, and, um, that's when council can decide what reserves to, to put that surplus to for, for future years. Excuse me, here's, uh, the ten year, um, what buildings, um, and, uh, that are proposed to be looked at and what type of work. Um, John M. Parrot Center, uh, looking at spending, um, total expenses of one point, almost one point two million for this year. Um, as mentioned, uh, earlier, um, just for council's reference, we've, uh, the debt, uh, we completely uh, completed this year, um, it was higher the last couple of years, but we still maintain um, that levy amount of a million sixty five thousand, so that has helped build up, uh, JMP's reserve, um, because we have now had to spend that in debt payments. Um, I know council in the past has felt that, that's future, that, thinking for eventually, that center will have to be either updated or replaced, and as much as we can put into reserves to help finance that, um, rehabilitation, um, is the best we can do, and, um, that's why the proposal of when, uh, debt has been paid off is to still keep that, um, payment going, um, but instead of going to debt, it goes, uh, to help increase the reserves. And here's their, uh, ten year capital, um, planning on, on the type of items that they are proposing. And just, um, I think, you know, it's come up in the, in the past as well, if, uh, these are the proposed budget, uh, items that we do do, but if staff have needs of change or a project's changed, and we do, we always do a report back to council saying, um, we have, we've had to switch, uh, maybe projects due to, um, supply issues or operational issues, and, um, but we do update council on what we've changed or proposed to change. Again, um, paramedic services, uh, that levy has not changed, and it's, uh, three hundred and twenty five thousand. And, uh, two thousand and twenty fours, um, projects include the, uh, ambulance replacement that was brought to council last meeting. Um, also, a, a big item this year is, uh, um, patient care, the, the stretchers, uh, on that replacement cycle. And obviously, we had to carry forward, um, the proposal for maybe the loyalist base, uh, site and design. Uh, I know that's a strategic, uh, plan that the council wanting us to move forward, um, on it as, uh, as soon as possible, and that, uh, that is your mark for this year for the base design and site. Library services. And just basically the collections for return equipment and maybe some buildings and signage. Museum and archives, um, also, just to, to refresh council members, um, I think two thousand and uh, fourteen, uh, major renovations, uh, at the museum, at that point, uh, we went into an unfinanced, uh, we called it unfinanced capital. Our reserve was in a negative balance, but that has all been paid back, uh, as of, uh, two thousand and twenty three, so, um, and we'll, we propose to maintain the levy, uh, and that will just help increase some museum, uh, reserves in the future, as that unfinance has now been, been cleared, and it's, um, no longer will be on, on the balance sheet, um, for, for council this year. And then there's, um, ten year capital plan. Social housing, uh, again, there's a, a, our portion, um, of, um, the annual levy increase of twenty five thousand, or is, is, uh, nineteen thousand. And these are, are, projects are the sites, um, and, um, those are uh, where we're looking at spending the money, what buildings we're looking at spending the seven hundred and thirty two thousand this year on on capital projects for the housing needs. And I think that, uh, wraps up the, the capital section, um, through you, Mr. Warden, I'm not sure if council has any specific questions that they want to address.
Any questions for Mark, uh, on the capital portion at this point? Uh, Brenda has a comment, go ahead, Brenda.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out for the benefit of any of our ratepayers watching tonight that the agenda package that's on our website includes details if, if they wanted to look, um, includes maps as well for roadwork for micro-surfacing and things like that, so just if any of our ratepayers are watching and, and thinking that this is, you know, a quick summary, they want details, they can go to the website to get those details off the agenda package.
Yes, thank you, it's, it's, it's all available. A- anyone else at this point?
If, if I could, I'd like to raise one that I missed during operations.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Counselor Hegador.
Um, it's page sixty nine of the, uh, what our package, it refers to the CWELCC funding, um, or the im- the, uh, impacts of that and the reduced funding that we're receiving. Um, I was just, uh, I guess where I'm going is I think if that funding was promised and then it was removed, um, I'd like to see us take every action we can to try and, uh, pressure the provincial government to reinstate that. Um, otherwise, next year, it may not impact this budget as much, but next year, from what the report says, it'll be a significant pressure. So I just want to put it out there that anytime we can have a delegation or, um, any other method of pressuring, even maybe if this is the, any OWC, um, item that we try to pressure the province to actually come good on their campaign promise.
Did, did you want to make that in the form of a motion, uh, uh, Counselor Hegador, or how, how did you want to ensure that, uh, that your concern is, uh, is, is, is maintained and expressed?
I, I can make it in a motion, um, yeah, if that's the best way to do it.
Well, then, go ahead.
Um, okay, I'd so move that, uh, the, uh, Lennox and Arlington County, um, take every opportunity to raise awareness to the province, the need for the, and I'm just looking for the term that was used, um, the funding that was promised for the Canada-wide early learning and childcare system, uh, in March of twenty twenty two.
Did that be restored, or, or how do you want it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the administrative funding.
Yes.
Very good, do I have a second or for that, that motion? Uh, I see council, uh, Deputy Warden Townend's hand up. Any further comment or discussion?
Not.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, uh, Counselor Hegador.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else, uh, comments on any aspect of the budget that, uh, Mark has presented so far? Just checking all your friendly faces here, okay, I don't see anything at this point. So, uh, do you want to take us home here, Mark?
Yes, thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Warden, um, again, um, as mentioned earlier, um, the budget enhancements, um, some are included in, in the budget presented tonight, and, uh, some are not, and, uh, it's obviously up for council's discretion on what to include i- in this in two thousand and twenty four's budget. But just, I'll, I'll walk you through, um, this, um, summary sheet, uh, that's included in your agenda. So items one to four that were presented in today's agenda have been included in tonight's budget. So that, um, that total of a hundred and fifty six thousand above the green line, uh, represents a point five percent uh, impact on the levy increase from last year, or six dollars and fifty six cents, and that's included in that forty two, forty one um, projected increase in the budget, so what's not included, um, whoops, oh, sorry. Sorry about that, um, are, uh, the items, uh, below the, the green line, so there's item number five, the, the financial uh, department staffing enhancement of forty four thousand eight ninety five, that represents roughly a point one percent increase or a dollar eighty nine. Just as place marks, um, I have in here the grant request to, for the MRI acquisition of twenty five thousand, uh, again, that's roughly one point one percent or a dollar six. Um, next are, are the cap of the capital levy increases, if we went from, uh, a two percent of the prior year's levy to two point two five, that would mean an increase of eighty four thousand nine hundred, uh, or three dollars and fifty eight cents, um, on the average rate pair, and if we were to go to, uh, from two to two point five, would be a hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred for seven dollars and fifteen cents, and then an increase of two to three percent, the four percent would be another three hundred and thirty nine thousand, and obviously a one percent, and would be an additional fourteen twenty nine. So what, uh, the next three lines is, is would be if, um, items number five and six, um, along with, um, a point two five percent or the eighty four nine, would be a hundred and fifty four thousand seven ninety five increase. Or if we went from items five and six, and a point five percent increase would be two hundred and thirty nine thousand six ninety five or point seven one, or an additional ten dollars and ten cents on the average bill. And then finally, if we were to look at items five and six, plus the full one percent increase in the capital levy would be four hundred and nine thousand, which is a one point two one percent increase or seventeen dollars and twenty four cents. So through you, Mr. Warden, um, I think this is the, the time that council maybe have the discussion on what you wish us to include or exclude in the two thousand and twenty four budget, and, um, especially in regards of as a grant amount, if that's the amount, or if you up to your discretion on, on what you would like us to do.
Okay, thank you, Mark, so we, we basically got, uh, uh, five items, uh, five or three items, item five, six, and seven, and seven has three different choices uh, as to, uh, uh, whether we want to go to two and a quarter, two and a half, or three, or I guess someone could say, no, we want to stand pat at, at two percent, that would be a fourth option, although I don't think it's a realistic one. So, uh, council, how do you wa- want to approach this? Um, I, the, the floor is open, um, uh, who, who wants to, I, I know Counselor Richardson, you were interested in, in the, uh, the MRI, but maybe we'll just deal with them in, in order, if, uh, if council doesn't mind, we can start with the finance department staffing enhancement, uh, this would be one full-time equivalent position, but starting, uh, partway through the year, um, what, what are you, uh, proposing here, anyone want to discuss that one? Uh, Counselor Hogg?
Yes, uh, well, this was recommended by the, uh, KPMG a year ago, so I don't think we have any choice but to go ahead, we've got to have, have to do the work, so I'm going to make a, a motion that we approve that one.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, uh, Deputy Warden, uh, any, any further discussion on this? Don't see anyone, I agree, in fact, KPMG recommends, I think, another three positions, so this is a very modest response to that recommendation, all in favor then? Okay, I can see everyone's hand there, I'm just double checking, that is carried, thank you. Uh, item six is the, uh, grant request for, uh, for the MRI, Counselor Richardson, uh, I'll, I'll give you the floor, uh, as you initially raised this.
Yeah, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Warden, uh, I'd be supportive of the twenty five thousand for, uh, ten years. It's, um, it's a little bit more than, uh, than what the average is that we're giving to, uh, I think the Kingston Health Science Center. Uh, I think it's fair, and, and as I said earlier, it's an extremely important piece of equipment for our medicals, um, staff in, in this, uh, in this region, in this county, and I, I think it's going to be very well used, so I think it's a good investment, uh, so I'd be supportive of that and would make that by way of motion.
And do I have a second or for that, I see Counselor Hogg is seconding that, is there any, uh, discussion on this one?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't know if you can see me, so I'm going to jump in verbally, uh, I just want to make sure council is aware or re- is remind, mindful of the fact that when they came last month, their request was for a million dollars a year, or, or a million dollars or a hundred thousand per year. I just, it wasn't in the report, so I just don't want I wouldn't want to not remind you of that before you make your motion, just for full disclosure, so.
Okay, thank you, uh, the motion is for twenty five thousand a year, which I guess, uh, uh, adds up to the equivalent of a quarter million, um, a- any further discussion, does anyone, uh, which saying has, uh, Counselor Hegador?
I, I agree with the motion, but to be honest with you, um, the impact that this machine could have in the community, um, within the, within the county, and as we said, even neighboring communities, I would, uh, I would support, I support the motion, but I would actually, uh, support it being a higher dollar value, um, simply to pay for a third of it was pretty quite high, but I would go for at least doubling what the motion is if, uh, Counselor Richardson would take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, we've, we've got an auction going here, Counselor Richardson.
But I, 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 I'm supportive of that, if, if, uh, Counselor Egadorn is looking for a friendly, uh, amendment to the motion, I'd be, uh, willing to make that friendly amendment to the motion.
Uh, the second or I believe was Counselor Hogg, Counselor Hogg, are you willing to entertain basically a doubling of the, uh, the, the funding from the original motion?
Yes, I guess so.
Okay, that's fairly significant, any further discussion?
No, that's, well, I was going to just, just, I was going to mention that, so, yeah, good.
Okay, so, uh, there doesn't seem to be any objection, um, I, I do agree, uh, this is a major piece of equipment, uh, spread out over ten years, uh, fifty thousand a year is, is, is not, uh, I, I think there'd be public support for it, let's, let's put it that way, this isn't, isn't something that's terribly controversial, so, uh, the, the motion is to fund this at the rate of, of fifty thousand a year for, for ten years, uh, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. So, so that brings us to our, our capital, uh, levy, um, percentage increase, does anyone want to weigh in on, on this one? Uh, Deputy Warden Townend?
Uh, through you, uh, Warden, I, just to get something on the floor, I, I would, I would move to increase the levy at two point five percent.
So that would basically mean, uh, in, in two years, we'd, we'd, uh, be at three percent then, if, if I understand this proposal. Uh, any, any further discussion on this one? Uh, any any further discussion on this one? Uh, councillor Frisch, I think you had your hand up, uh, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, yeah, yes, uh. And with that, with that option, then I understand the levy would be, the total would be the original two point one plus point one for staffing, and it'd be zero point two for the MRI. And then zero point seven one for this option, which I think would put you at three point one one. Am I getting that right, Mr. Day?
Right, Mark?
Um, through you, Mr. Warden, actually be, boy, it's it'd be another point five, not a point one, because it's it's the hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred, those options at the ball below there.
Yes.
The other two, so it would be um, um, it'd be the forty four plus fifty, then plus the one sixty nine eight.
So what would the percentage be then?
It it'd be roughly a point, point seven or eight, point eight, because they're just the with the rounding, it would go up a little bit because it's uh instead of twenty five, it'd be fifty, which is close to the staffing enhancement. So point two, and it's will be able, point seven or probably point eight percent levy increase.
Uh, in addition.
In addition to the, in in addition to the two point one, so around three, it'll be a close to three.
Okay.
Once I do the, I can present it to council next time.
Okay, it'd be slightly less.
Number, yeah.
Be slightly less, what I was saying, it'd be, but it'd be very close to three.
Yeah, a little bit over, a little bit under, yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, that's clear then, Tony?
I would, I would second it, I don't know if you want that yet or not.
Yes, I do, yes, that's fine, that puts it on the floor, so.
I'll second it, yes.
Any further discussion on uh um item? Item five, uh extra staffing uh for the finance department. Item six is fifty thousand a year, uh item seven, the motion is the second option, uh putting us at a approximately a three percent to uh increase. Any any further discussion on this motion? Just jumping back and forth between gallery pictures here, I don't see any hands up. Oh, there we are, that's better, now the screen isn't being shared anymore. Uh, okay, any further discussion, this is a big decision here. I see nothing, I'll call a question, all in favor. Very good, thank you. So that uh, that was the budget enhancements, uh so um I guess the last item is is provide direction on each budget, and we've we've done that. Is there anything else you require of us at this point, Mark? You know what you're you're dealing with here?
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, um, no, I thank you very much for your direction and open repair report uh for the next council meeting on on those enhancement changes and the effect on the on the tax levy. And um in future, also, just as a reminder, we will be looking at uh, you know, some major capital projects and strategic initiatives on what council will want to do. Um, might give you some um ballpark numbers if you're looking at large items. Um, whether it's uh so social housing, um, once we know some costs for the ambulance base and what c- council direction wants uh on on the library issue too.
Yeah, that's it, that's a big one. Uh, okay, thank, thank you, Mark. Um, that brings us to matters for information, uh there's one on on, I think, guess there's a Q and A event uh for the hospital MRI, uh Tracy, do you need a motion to receive that?
Yes, please.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the item for information, uh councillor Fritsch, councillor Hegedorn, all in favor? That's carried, uh, we have a bylaw on council remuneration, let me just get that up on my screen here. Um. So this would be a bylaw to amend uh or to amend the bylaw three, four, one, eight, um uh slash eighteen, revive remuneration of members of council and payment of expenses, members of council. Uh, can I get, uh, I guess we need first, second and third reading, Tracy, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Warden.
Can I get a motion to that effect, councillor Hogg? And councillor Calver, any discussion, all in favor? It's carried. That's great, that uh, that's one of the hardworking meetings that we have, and uh I think it was good, we had some good discussion, and uh we'll have some reports coming back to our next uh budget meeting. At this point, I just need someone to make a motion for a confirming bylaw. Councillor Richardson, councillor Hegedorn, all in favor? It's carried and a motion to adjourn. Uh, councillor Hogg, deputy warden Townend, all in favor? Carrie, thank you, everybody.